Council of the Board, we have a roll call please.
Councilman Wommack?
Here.
Councilman Miller?
Here.
Mayor Shelton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Here.
Councilman Walker?
Here.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to develop those that we should do so, stand for the indication given out. I think you passed our first and final amendment, Dr. Kevin Conrad, filed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States.
Good evening, let's pray. Holy, loving, and merciful Gods, our help in ages past, our hope for years to come. We come before you in this historically challenging time, seeking your divine grace, wisdom, and strength. We pray for our community that would thrive in every situation, that you would draw us together. Although we are challenged in many ways, we look to you to sustain us in our strength, to help us persevere in adversity, to bind us together in common purpose and common good, to heal dissent, division, and hurt, and help all of us be good stewards of the gifts and sacred trust that you have given us. We especially pray for all of our students, instructors, administrators, families, leaders in our nation, and pray now that you would grant our leaders here true wisdom and discernment in their deliberations and decisions. In Jesus' name, amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to consider approval of agenda presented. Are there any changes? Any change?
Yes, I believe you have a change in mind, Marty.
It's probably there. Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to amend the agenda to add a line item for hearing from the public on non-agenda-related items.
On I?
Yes, or to add a section before number eight, number eight.
No, you're talking about only seven I, right?
Oh, I'll make that consideration at the time.
He wants to add public comments.
Or non-agenda-related notes.
Okay. All right, is there a motion?
Stand aye.
Stand aye. Motion taken, any discussion? Roll call please.
Councilman Wommack?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Under the law business, five A, consider approval of amendment held on August 20th, is there a motion?
Stand aye.
Second. Motion taken, any discussion? Roll call please.
Councilman Wommack?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Five B, hold the public hearing, consider on second, final reading ordinance O-200814, meaning the budget of the general obligation debt service fund for the city of Cootville for District Mayor June 20th.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council members, this ordinance amends the general obligation debt service budget to reflect the actions we have taken to pay off debt early. There have been no change in the ordinance since first reading, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Stand aye.
Second.
Motion is second. We have a public hearing on this matter, agreeing what is about this matter. Close the public hearing this session, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Councilman Wommack?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Consent agenda six A, set a date, ten one twenty for a public hearing on ordinance O-200916, meaning the code of the city of Cootville by the Department, entitled fifteen, entitled motor vehicle traffic and parking, and new chapter nine, entitled residential parking district. Six B, set a date, ten one twenty for a public hearing on ordinance O-200917, regarding a portion of property located at nineteen forty East Spring Street from CG General Commercial to QM Sports, Florida and Miami. Six C, consider awarding bid for cable for electric permit, and six D, consider approval to purchase three hundred fifty thousand passion carts, sole source providers of public works. Is there a motion?
Stand aye.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Roll call please.
Councilman Wommack?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Under new business, seven A, consider authorizing the city manager to execute permanent drainage easement agreement with Tennessee Baptist Mission Board, Mr. Williams.
All right, council members, the Baptist Police Administration of Tennessee Track is requesting that the city grant to the Tennessee Baptist Mission Board a permanent drainage easement, here's the class, on property owned by the city of Cootville/Cooteville Regional Medical Center, which is located at one hundred and forty West Seventh Street. The BCM is in the process of completing improvements to their facility located at the southwest corner of the intersection of West Seventh Street and North Cedar. This is the BCM right here, and they're doing improvements necessary, including additional parking. And the improvements include, as I just discussed, the additional parking, which requires the addition of storm drainage facilities. The request to drainage easement is necessary to accommodate those facilities, and the easement is depicted on this map. And on the survey that's circled here, it's only an area of three hundred and twenty-two square feet. And it's my understanding that CMRC has approved of the request to grant the easement. Since the city actually owns the property, council approval is required. And I would recommend for the council's approval granting the easement as described, subject to confirmation of approval of CRMC.
Righty, is there a motion?
Standing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Roll call please.
Councilman Wommack?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven B, consider approval to purchase an additional shade structure for the Heart of the City Playground utilizing Sourcewell purchasing cooperative for the nature services. Rick Wood.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We continue to look for opportunities to improve the shade and provide shade at the Heart of the City Playground at Dogwood Park, which was something that was identified as a need in our recent, most recent update of our master plan there. Last council meeting, you approved the purchase of three shade structures to cover the benches in the small tots, tiny tots play area, the two to five-year-old area. We now have a design and an ability to put a larger shade structure over two of the benches on the five to twelve-year-old play area near the swing. So I'm requesting the purchase of one double-posted ten-by-sixteen canopy shade structure through the Sourcewell contract, the amount of seven thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty cents. And I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Stand aye.
Second. Motion is second. Any questions from the council? Roll call please.
Councilman Wommack?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Seven C, consider approval to purchase Microsoft Office three sixty-five software, Coats Department, Steve Porter.
Mayor and council, we are asking to purchase Microsoft Office three sixty-five subscriptions. Most of our employees use Office twenty-ten. Microsoft has been in support for that product on October thirteenth. And they will no longer provide software or screen updates for it. This year, we had originally planned to replace Office twenty-ten in our email system with Office twenty-nineteen in exchange over twenty-nineteen. The recent ransomware attacks against local governments across the state have made us reevaluate that decision. Office three sixty-five is generally considered to be more secure due to their continued software updates. And our email system would be healthier than Microsoft's cloud, protected by their security. We would be purchasing subscriptions for approximately three hundred and thirty users on state contract pricing through SHI International. The total annual subscription cost would not exceed fifty thousand dollars. I recommend this purchase. It asks for your approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Stand aye.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? Roll call please.
Councilman Wommack?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Seven D, consider authorizing the city manager entering into a contract with the Tennessee Department of Safety and Homeland Security for highway safety grants, the State Department Chief Attorney.
We've had a pitch to change. There will change it. Mayor and council, we have historically received three grants from the Tennessee Department of Safety and Homeland Security. They are the SAD grant for twenty thousand dollars, the Network Formative Grant for twenty thousand, and the Alcohol DUI Grant for forty-five thousand. The grants begin on October first and run through September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. No matching funds are required. The grants are used for training, overtime, and the purchase of equipment, and I would request your approval. Thank you, is there a motion?
Stand aye.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? Roll call please.
Councilman Wommack?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
On two seventy, consider authorizing the city manager entering into a contract with Eye in the Sky LLC for security and access control system of the State Department headquarters, Mayor Williams.
This contract is for the security access control and network video system throughout the new police facility. The vendor is Eye in the Sky LLC. The item will be purchased against the Metro-Natural contract. By entering into the contract at this time, Eye in the Sky will be able to coordinate with the general contractor. This is part of our FFNE package that is budgeted, and the purchase amount is two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Stand aye.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? Roll call please.
Councilman Wommack?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven F, consider awarding bid to cleaning services, Department of Public Service.
Mayor and council members, we accept a bid for cleaning services at our West Davis Road facility. We received two bids, the low bid meeting specifications being Channel and Sons Cleaning for one thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars per month. And I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Stand aye.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Councilman Wommack?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven G, consider authorizing the city manager entering into an engineering contract with the playground Interceptor Sewer Project for Water Quality Patrol, Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'm seeking authorization for the city manager to enter into a engineering contract with Gretchen Smith and Partners. The contract will develop detailed design calculations, plans, and specifications to construct Fairground Interceptor. Project will provide sewer service to the proposed Fund of County Fairground property they bought out there. I know they're not going to use it all for that, but it will serve that area and position us to be able to serve. Go back to the first slide change. So the property in blue is the county's property they purchased. The area I've got depicted in red, it's just sort of a general location, how we're going to try to take sewer from the interstate up to that location, go to the same one. And then this is just sort of a general layout. We'll work all those details out. This is sort of a general idea, go to the next one. And then, so we worked out the design services fees. I broke those down, and the total amount to exceed is two hundred and forty-five, seven hundred and fifty-two, and would recommend your approval.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Standing.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments from the council? Roll call please.
Councilman Wommack?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seven H, consider approval agreement with UCHRAS to establish a pilot program to facilitate access to social services to individuals in need, footprints, terminals.
All right, council members, we're submitting for your approval as you stay in agreement with the upcoming Human Resource Agency Substance Abuse Relief Program for the purpose of facilitating access to social services for citizens and individuals here in the city of Cootville. The agreement would establish a pilot program for the city to receive enhanced services from the SAS program to assist people in need of social services over and above the normal level of assistance provided by the program. The trial program would run for approximately five months, or from tomorrow, September fourth, through January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. The cost to the city is four thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents monthly. In exchange, the SAS program will provide on-call services to the Cootville Police Department in engaging with individuals in need of social services to assist them in finding housing support, counseling, and medical and mental health care if needed. The SAS personnel are being available to the city twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. The agreement requires weekly reports to be submitted to the chief of police and the city manager, detailing the calls received, actions taken, and results achieved for the purpose of evaluating the effectiveness of the enhanced program. It should be stressed that this is a pilot program and is a work in progress. There will be frequent meetings to evaluate the effectiveness of the program, and modifications may be made as the program evolves. The program can be terminated at any time by either party with seven days' written notice, and there is no obligation by either party to continue the program after its termination. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, but I would recommend for your approval of the agreement.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Stand aye.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council?
As a nurse practitioner who's worked in the emergency department and with medically underserved, low-income populations, I know firsthand how hard it is to find these resources and to maintain that continuity of care when someone gets help. So I feel the benefits of this program are immeasurable. I mean, the fact that we're going to be able to connect our police department with the resources so that when they come in contact with someone who needs help, they can hand them off to a person who is going to connect them with the help and follow up and make sure that they're getting the help. So this is the type of sustainable program that can really change some of life by connecting them with the right resources and giving them the right to all the chance when they're struggling about this.
I think this is a great program for our city. You know, it's gonna, I think it's important for people to understand that all homeless people in the city and other people with social problems, you know, they need to be addressed. And, you know, they need an opportunity and they need assistance. And I think for a government agency that is independent and can assist in that and has dedicated work for the city of Cootville is a really good opportunity for the city to work towards that goal. I think it has a good effect on our police officers and our citizens because it is an efficient way to not only make contact with people who are in need, but to follow up on them in the future. And it's my understanding that that is a service that will continue to be provided. And I hope this program works in the future, certain that the council and myself are vigorously interested in trying to make sure that something does continue. You know, I do know we want to evaluate the program and look at its success over time. And I'm kind of excited about it in the mindset that I think it's going to be a very good way to help people in our community that otherwise still cost taxpayers and other efforts are actually more expensive than helping maybe, but they ease it in the most appropriate thing to do. And I think that's something that our city can entertain, and I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
Councilman Wommack?
Yes. I think we need a service with social workers available on a twenty-four-seven basis. And this program, from what I can see and what they will do with money if we're depending on it, will give us our police, who are not trained social workers, they're very nice people, very good people, and they do what they can. But they're not trained social workers and don't have the knowledge of services that are available. And having a trained social worker on call twenty-four-seven and help the police and help the people that have a mental or drug problem or some kind of homeless problem to find services that can help them. So I think this is a win-win. It helps the police and it helps the people that need their services. So I think this is a definitely needed program.
Okay. Yeah, I would just add, you know, we've had a committee set up a number of years ago and working through this, and I know with Eldridge who is going to be able to help with this program was part of that, and we've got another agency that, you know, I would just say for those individuals or groups that are suggesting that anyone in this community is attempting to deny anyone the help or services they need or extremely uninformed and not attached to the problem. I would submit that the exact opposite is true, and that our community on many levels stands ready to assist those in need. I believe that point has been proven time and time again, through churches, social services, mental health services, nonprofits, many of which the city helps with, benevolent individuals, businesses. There's a rescue mission that does a great job, and the city government are all willing and ready to assist those that are truly in need. And this is a fantastic add-on service that can supplement not only those organizations, but it's Councilman Wommack that our police department to help, give the help to those folks that need it. So I'm excited about what this can do. Any other comments from the council?
Roll call please.
Councilman Wommack?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven, I consider on first reading ordinance O-200815, five, meaning chapter six of Title sixteen of the Cootville Municipal Code, Mr. Williams.
All right, council members, this ordinance, as you stated, events Title six, specifically section sixteen oh one. It deletes the current provisions in its entirety and inserts a new section sixteen oh one, entitled obstructing public streets, alleys, and sidewalks prohibited. The ordinance includes most of the provisions that were included in the ordinance to enter the council at the last meeting, which failed due to lack of a second, but with several additions and modifications. The additions and modifications were formulated by the city attorney and myself based on the comments and concerns identified by the council. Significant revision to the ordinance is the inclusion of a preamble stating the purpose for the provisions and outlining specific findings, and those are included in the first section of it. The body of the ordinance remains pretty much the same. It does prohibit the destruction or use of the public right of way for the purpose of storing, exhibiting, selling, or attempting to sell any goods, merchandise, or other materials or any service, and that is currently in our code, so we're just including it in this section too. It prohibits a person from obstructing, standing, or otherwise occupying any portion of the public right of way at certain specific intersections, and that is a change from what you looked at in the original ordinance, for the purpose of soliciting or accepting donations of money or any other item from the occupant of any vehicle. And it prohibits a person from occupying the public right of way when attempting to alert the driver or occupant of a motor vehicle that is on street to any commercial activity. And this again is the person that's hawking business, is walking up and down the sidewalk, is what that would address. Festivals or other events and activities permitted by the city are exempt, as are fundraising events for five oh one C three organizations which are permitted out of the city. One of the modifications specifies that the provisions about soliciting or accepting donations apply only to intersections of minor collector or higher classifications of streets. And I haven't read it, but I'll show you in just a second. Another modification provides that the restrictions also apply to areas where the public could be considered a captive audience, and that is identified as ATM, transit stops, or drive-in or walk-up food service windows. Busking, which was a new word to me, but busking is playing music on the sidewalk, is excluded from the provisions of the ordinance, but at least that can continue. And the penalties are proposed as ten dollars for the first offense, twenty-five for the second, fifty for the third, and all subsequent offenses, and the ordinance specifically weighs court costs when there are violations occurs for all offenses. Let me, this is the classification of third offenders which is referenced in the proposed ordinance and identifies streets of minor collector status. Classifications are broken into four or five categories. First are major arteries, and those are pretty easy to identify, you can see those on the list. Minor arteries, there's a little more than a half dozen of those in the city. So the ordinance has proposed that it put both of the, any intersections on those streets. There are a number of major collectors that the ordinance has drafted would apply to, they're listed on the screen. There are many streets classified as minor collector that this ordinance would apply to. If you have any questions, I will try to address them. I would recommend for your approval.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion with the requirement that we hold a public hearing at the second reading on the ordinance.
So a motion on the floor, and that would include that we have a public hearing. A motion that is considered tonight, we had, in fact, two readings, until we had a public hearing at the second meeting. It's our second. Motion is the second. I'm going to have a discussion with the council.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say real quick, just to kind of clarify. In the past, we have not had a public comment on ordinances related to the city municipal code and changes in this nature, however, with the interest of the public on this matter and the number of calls, I think. But at least I have received, and maybe many others on the council, that it would be a good idea to give the public an opportunity to speak on this ordinance at the next council meeting and allowing the council time to advertise that public hearing and let everyone know since it was not advertised for this meeting. And so that's a fair way to achieve that goal, and since it's outside of what we normally do. With that being said, I'll continue on about this measure. I think that this is a good way and a safe way to protect the population that is attempting to solicit vehicles in busy intersections and busy areas of the town. I think that that is a very dangerous thing, you know, research by the council and by the city, you know, has showed that, you know, in other towns that, you know, I believe in Lebanon, there's been a death occurred from where somebody has been struck by a vehicle. And so, you know, I feel personally that it's a very dangerous thing to be in those areas while traffic is present and to be in a situation where you're putting the general public in the state of being a captive audience member, where they cannot leave or walk away or otherwise do anything else. So, you know, I don't think that this, the way this ordinance has changed, I don't think it applies to saying that this is not allowed anywhere in the city. I think it applies to those areas where this would be an unsafe thing to do. And I think that that is an important thing for us, you know, to evaluate and to push forward. I think that, you know, I also would like to add that, you know, passing your change out your car window, I don't know if that's the best way to help people in need in our community. I think that what we've already done tonight is one step, maybe one additional way our community can handle trying to reach out and help people that otherwise need help in our community. I think there's many other ways, as the mayor mentioned earlier, that is performed in our community and can be done. And, but I think that what this does is it addresses a concern of the citizens in our community, and it addresses a safety concern for those people out there so that we can reach out to them and otherwise, you know, engage with them and try to offer alternative means. So appreciate the time, Mr. Mayor.
I had a lot of eloquent emails about this, about this motion, about this motion law. And they were very eloquent, and I think that people need to have the right to address this in a public hearing. And I'm glad that they've talked about doing this in our next council meeting. I think both sides need to be present, people who've been inconvenienced or had problems, and people who've had safety situations about this. and people who've had safety situations about, uh, this, uh, problem. I think they need to speak, but I think people have, should have the right to speak about what's going on and, uh, why we, why they need help and why, uh, we need to do things. So I think the fact that we've sponsored this, a previous, uh, motion to give social service support is the first step, but there are a lot of people that are homeless in our area that have problems, that, uh, they, people need to speak up for them. Our churches and other groups, uh, need to, uh, step forward and try to help these people. Back in the nineteen nineties, we had a free medical clinic here in Cookville that had five hundred kids volunteers, including churches, Rotary Club, uh, and dentists, and we were able to take care of medical needs of about seventeen, eighteen hundred people because of the volunteerism in Cookville. I think something similar needs to happen now in Cookville, come together with the churches and other groups, try to help this problem. Uh, I want to hear both sides, and I'm, like I said, I was very happy to hear one side, but I want to hear both sides before voting on, on this measure, and so, because of that fact, I'd like to ask to put this, uh, this motion on the table for two weeks until our next council meeting, when we can have people who are for the motion and people who are against the motion be there, so I'd like to, I'd make a motion to put this on the table.
There's no discussion on motions to table something?
Okay.
Do the Robert Truitt order?
So, roll call.
Councilman Womack?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
No.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Yeah.
Two yeses, three noes, motion fails.
Okay, so we're back to the motion, have the yes, or yes on that, sir?
Yeah, um, there's a couple parts of the, um, ordinance that, a few questions about it. Section five, where it says no person shall by means of sign or other device of any kind use or occupy any portion of the public right of way, including any public street, median, alley, or sidewalk, to attempt to alert the driver or, or any occupant of a motor vehicle that is on the street to any type of activity. Would this, um, say a realtor or a, um, some sort of business has a bumper sticker on their car? I, I don't see how, um, like, we would actually have to find them because they've got a sign on their vehicle that's on, on the roadway that's alerting, um, an occupant of another motor vehicle of, of commercial activity. So would we have to cite someone for having a bumper sticker on their vehicle?
No.
Would this put along the books that a police officer could cite someone for a bumper sticker on their vehicle?
Clarify this, we'll put pedestrian in there if you'd like, if that's your concern about us kicking in somebody for having a bumper sticker, we can put pedestrian in there.
I mean, what you're going to? Working on that section is extremely restrictive to...
Well, I think, isn't this one that was carried forward that currently exists?
No.
Then it should be limited to, uh, it should be limited to the, um, intersection.
Well, no, it shouldn't.
Well, if it, if this is not one that's carried forward, then we'd have to look at it. I thought this was something that you currently had that you couldn't do.
Well, the only thing that was included in the original was number plus three. Three. That's currently in the municipal code.
Well, that's the one.
What number were you? Uh, five.
Okay. Councilman Miller referred to the one about, uh, you, it's, we talked about, about, uh, hawkers like the person that would dress up as a statue of liberty and walk up and down, try to advertise, uh, for a, a business, that's what this refers to.
But that's already not allowing this code to be on the sidewalk.
Well, as long as they're moving, they're not blocking the sidewalk, they can walk up and down the sidewalk.
Did you say that if they simply stepped off the sidewalk, but on private property, that it would leave you in a problem?
No, they could step back on the business property, they could do that.
Yeah, so that still allows them to do that.
Walk up and down the sidewalk.
My question about this is, is there's a, if there's a sign on a vehicle, this does not, um, stop a, an enforcement on that vehicle?
Again, I think if that's your concern, you can charge this to pedestrian. Vehicles and, uh, motorized vehicles aren't allowed on the sidewalk, if you're concerned about that, you can charge it.
It says it's included in any public street.
You're, you're in a different, you don't, you don't have, this is the current one.
Um, I've, I've got two other concerns with this. Um, on section ten, um, three and four, where we're adding all the minor arterial and the minor collector streets, I, I think also the yes are extremely restrictive, um, the, the speech in, in the community. I, I think that we're getting away from the public safety aspect at that point, and we're going after speech instead of public safety, so, um, I would like to have an amendment, to make an amendment to remove three and four out of section ten from the ordinance.
Okay. There's a motion and second, we've got that, but most, those runs to neighborhoods, any of them. So, so you're going to push solicitation into neighborhoods by doing whatever?
At, at this point, it's not about public safety, which I'm concerned about public safety and not about speech. I think everybody has the first amendment right to speak.
But many of these streets were even more narrow, sort of being even less safe, or no place to stand, maybe not even a sidewalk.
Can I, can I say something on that?
Yes, sir.
Uh, which did you say, Mark?
Um, three and four, the minor arterial streets and highways, and the minor collector streets and highways.
Because you don't want to do that because you skipped a classification there. You go major arterial, minor arterial, which you would leave, uh, you're skipping all the other minor collectors, but you're leaving, um, you're leaving minor arterials and they're deleting that, but then you're le, leaving all major collectors, so major collectors, I think what you wanted to say, kind of wrong is two and four, that's your two collectors, because a major collector is less than a minor arterial.
Uh, or, if, if that's the case.
I mean, look at the, I've got it up here, it's going to say it. Well, they start out, your classifications, this is from the highest classification, they have major arterials, minor arterials, and so what you said would leave, uh, uh, you said three and four, so it would take this out, but you'd leave major collectors in. So you take out minor collectors, but you leave major collectors in with what you said. These, these would, uh, yeah, over, uh, arterials, so you think you want to take major and minor arterials and leave those and then take collectors out, is what I'm, I think is what you're trying to do.
Well, I, I see, um, I guess one of the minor arterials is right next to my house, and I don't mind if someone has feet right next to my house, they can have a sign up all day long, asking for money near my house, but that's, I, I feel.
Well, look at that, that way, but you're skipping classification of streets.
Then, um, can I revise the motion and just, uh, or try to remove two, three, and four?
You have to ask the person who made the second.
Yeah, okay.
So now you're, so we have a new motion?
Yes, our new motion to remove two, three, and four.
We can have the discussion.
There's a second announced, it's a discussion.
Yes, uh, I, I'd like to, so is, is this being a, uh, would, would this be a material change then?
Uh, well, you, change anything, you want your first reading, between first and second reading would be where you can only, cannot make a material change, so, uh...
If, if we were to delay this and, and make the change at a work session or later date when we have more time for discussion, and if this were to pass tonight, could, could that be changed at that time?
Yes, I think so, yes.
So, so as part of that discussion, you know, I think since we can look at this at the next work session a little closer, despite the outcome of the vote tonight, that's certainly something that we take a look at during our, our next work session, talk about, uh, but that, that shouldn't prohibit any vote this evening on it, since we have delayed already a prior vote towards this issue.
All right. Any other discussion on this amendment thing? So if you vote yes, you're removing these three items, if you vote no, they will stay, subject to still being able to discuss it at the next, roll call. Or do you have, do you have a comment?
No, I was making sure I understood that correctly, that we will, yeah, there is the option to discuss it at the work session with more information, yeah.
Uh, roll call, please.
Councilman Womack?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
No.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
No.
Two yeses, three noes, the motion fails.
All right, we're back to the original as we discuss.
And then, and then I, I'm sorry, I've got one more, um, amendment that I would like to make, and it's on thirteen, um, where it talks about the penalty. Um, I don't think a first offense should be a final offense, I think it should be a warning, um, even if we do give a citation, I, I think there should be zero fine on that. Uh, I, uh, someone that's actually struggling, I don't, I don't feel that, um, we should be, be fined, you know?
Is, is that a warning in, in, if they, if they come to pay their fine or come to court, or is that a warning from an officer?
When they, when they, uh, officer write a citation to them, and they come to court, they should not be charged with, by ten dollar fee for that.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, there's a motion and second, now discussion on this, and then is there a...
Same, same question before, can this be a...
Right, yes, but, yes.
Roll call, please. Councilman Womack?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
No.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
No.
Okay.
Motion fails.
I just want to make sure that we do clarify that we are going to have further discussion on this, because I think all of us up here, no one wants to criminalize anyone who commits one of these offenses, and I think we've proven that, uh, during the contrast with UCHRAs, to, to make sure that we've got the resources, so when our police do come in contact with someone, we now can connect them with the people to get the help that they need, so I want to make sure everyone understands that, and, um, that we're going to have more discussion about it.
I want to clarify, these are not criminal provisions, it's a, it's a civil penalty, nobody is going to have a criminal record.
Thank you, that's okay.
No matter how many offenses they get.
Correct.
It's a, it's, it's civil, it makes.
No one goes to jail, no one, no criminal record, this is not criminal, it's not like the, the criminalization of anyone, just make sure that's clarified.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add to that discussion a little bit, I think, I think it's important for the public to know and understand, and something I just want to say personally, you know, I, I personally look at this as, as a panhandling or solicitation is probably a better word, issue in high traffic areas. Uh, this, this does not mean, if your home was that you are being penalized, or that you are, should be seen as a criminal, I actually don't believe that at all, I think that that is a, that would be a gross misunderstanding, uh, you know, of, of what the intent of this is, or the intent of what we're trying to do. Uh, if, if, if you are disadvantaged in some way and need assistance, you know, I think that, 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 that doesn't make you a criminal, that does not make you wrong in any means, that, that still makes you a member of the community and, and somebody that we need to try to help. I think the idea of this being a civil penalty and not a criminal penalty is, is to discourage this activity, solicitation, in these areas, for the safety and the welfare of both the people who are soliciting the activity, and the drivers, and the citizens of the community who otherwise are created captive audience, as I said earlier, and so, you know, I, I don't want to, I don't want people to use this ordinance, or to even think that this ordinance means that people who are disadvantaged, or homeless, or otherwise need, need assistance are criminals or wrong in any way, it's just simply that we don't want that activity happening in certain areas because it's unsafe, and, and because it, it poses a problem for the community, so, thank you.
That was, uh, yes, thank you, that, well, Fred, I, I would say too, you know, this, this particular issue was not a problem the council sought out to fix, uh, it's become an obligation due to citizens' complaints, to at least attempt to find a solution. I know that our citizens are concerned about the safety and rising level of solicitation in our city, they've expressed their concerns to me personally, I've received about over fifty emails, calls, or messages, I know they've expressed it to law enforcement, to the tune of one hundred and forty-one calls so far this year, which is up three hundred and fifty percent from last year, uh, they've expressed it to other city leaders, as well as members of the council, so our citizens are simply asking for a community solution to a community problem. Uh, I have countless people that have reached out to me and described issues of where they have felt unsafe, uh, you know, everyone has rights, however those rights should not infringe upon someone else's rights, feel safe and secure in our city, and, uh, so we have a, we have an obligation to keep our city and our citizens safe, both those that are driving, and those that are attempting to choose, and oftentimes it's path of, uh, making a living, and, uh, I've had countless people again, talking to me about different things, and we can get into that more another time, I have, uh, one or two dozen different, uh, requests and calls from people about things that they have dealt with, so, uh, I think this is, again, I think there's, I think these are two separate issues that overlap, and we dealt with the one with the UCHRAs, AS deal specifically for homeless people, and now we're dealing with a safety, uh, issue that does have overlap in that, but oftentimes does not, and so, um, we, I think this is a, a way that's for us, for the city, to try to address that. Do we have any other comments, folks? All right, roll call, please.
Councilman Womack?
No.
Councilman Miller?
No.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Yes.
Councilman Walker?
Yes.
Three yeses, no, no, motion carries.
Thank you, uh, that concludes our agenda portion of the meeting, the, uh, now are there any citizens that want to address the council on, 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 uh, non-agenda city-related matters? Yes, come to the selection.
For that, this, uh, portion just talked about?
No, it's, non-agenda items only. I said, we'll have a public hearing relating to anything related to this matter.
Okay, are you going to?
On the September seventeenth meeting.
Okay, we're glad you said that.
We'll have a full public hearing.
Homeless problem.
Yes, sir, full public hearing at that meeting, September seventeenth.
Full public hearing at that meeting, September 17th. We'll, we'll publish that. We may actually move it to a larger space, right, to manage it?
Yeah, we feel like, we've got some other items that you set a date for that we expect to be crowded.
We may actually move that to the, to the... Yes, sir. Did you have something again?
Yes, thank you.
Non-agenda?
Yes.
City-related matters and address your comment to the entire council. You'll have three minutes and obviously nothing directed to any individual person.
Okay, thank you. I'm Steve Lusk, I've been here for, since 1978. I'm here to introduce a COVID project that I'm working with right now for our city. I meet with Governor Lee and Senator Blackburn in two weeks, but I thought I would introduce this here first, do some research for opinions. COVID-19 testing has evolved from a nasal swab up your nose to almost the back of your eyeball and waiting several days for results. Our serology test is much faster, it's in 15 minutes. It's like a diabetic test, a finger stick, in our self-contained lab, it's a cassette, you can have a peace of mind in just a few minutes. Different businesses have protocols that may require testing weekly, especially when dealing with the public, our police and our first responders is what I've been targeting in multiple areas, with this across the country. Churches, tech students, athletics, restaurants, nursing homes, our road warriors, our truckers, these are all people that need to be tested quite frequently. Gets to be expensive or they can wait in the long lines and take several days to get their answers. We're not just offering an antigen diagnostic test. I was speaking with Dr. Gray recently, he said our town needs an antigen, a much better test. We also offer IgM diagnostic and antibodies, meaning that the strength of the antibodies if you've had the disease before. There's 50% of our population that are testing positive, but they're asymptomatic, and this test would help us with that. It would take care of showing that we have the antibodies. It does take away the fear and the need of multiple testing if you already had it, but you just didn't know about it. Think about the people that are every week waiting and taking a test and wondering if they have it, but they've already had it, or a version of the coronavirus, SARS, H1N1 or COVID-2, they're all from the same family. Literally only 5 to 10% of the deaths are actual COVID, most are from underlying health issues. With the flu season coming up upon us, we're going to be worrying ourselves to death. It's FDA approved, we have the emergency use authorization, EUA. Our capacity right now on hand is 1 million units. We have the ability for 2 to 4 million per week to make. Our third-party efficacy test with the test, which I did bring copies of every company in the world, which isn't that much, we're talking less than a dozen companies, I'd want to show the comparisons if that is something that you would like to look at. This would make, allow us to make an informed decision. Our tests can be administered by individuals and sold to businesses, but medical professionals, because we want to do research, is what we're really looking for. We recommend that all positives from any test should follow up with a medical professional and a retest so they can start immediately. In closing, I'd like to talk about the cost, but not in this fast pace. I would love to sit down with anybody at a later date to show how through volume pricing on-hand product, if you would think about what we've done over the years.
Which I...
Excuse me?
Your time is about three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Get to the lecture and identify yourself, please, and where you're from.
Hey, my name is Nathan Gentry. I've spoken for most of you this week. This is a non-agenda item. I just want to thank the mayor and the council for the opportunity to talk to me on the phone, answer my emails and calls through the week, and I'm very, very grateful for the work that you all are doing to move this forward as a united community. Very appreciative of the work and of the listening ears that you all have lent to it. It means a lot to me and I look forward to speaking with you more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? More compliments, anyone have anything? I've got a question for... Roger?